And I call to order this public hearing for program year two thousand twenty-three, community development block grant budget. And we have Heather Tewell here to provide us a presentation. Just stand, just stand there. Thank you, Heather.
All right, so for the twenty-three block grant, we, Susan and I, worked really hard this year on establishing the programs that we felt were going to be the most impactful. So we did a lot of work with utilizing what had been used in the prior years. And then how can we enhance on that to be able to serve the Carlisle Borough community more? In some key modifications we want to highlight is the Public Service for Hope Station. We've decided to take that out of the Carlisle Borough Program and move it into the Cumberland County Program for twenty-three. Since Cumberland County gets more in their direct entitlement, there was more opportunities for them to compete at a higher rate. And right now, they felt that that was an easy transition for them to do. The rental housing assistance was in twenty nineteen to help financial assistance for rental residents to rehab and address codes. So far, the borough has set aside sixty K and has been slowly not putting any funds currently. But if they are depreciated, we can readjust. It's an easier situation to add money later than it is to have to recreate and find money. So we're able to do those kind of transitional movings, reallocate and reopen up unobligated funds. We've also worked on Employment Skill Center is in a similar situation from Hope Station. So they've moved actually to the county pool as well. And then we have the Lincoln Cemetery upgrades, which we're hoping that will get started here soon as well. As that park has some flags from multiple years. So new, we have utility payments for the community center. We have that system in place already, is similar how we do the Hope Station payments. So it's going to be a very smooth process, process and execution. The Anthology Project is going to be coming online. And Susan and I have worked out a lot of the kinks with that to make sure it was compatible to HUD's guidelines. So making sure that the educational piece was there, especially in the LMI area. And then the tree beautification program is going to be a very exciting addition as we're working on through the sidewalks and other kind of additions to that entities to be able to keep, keep it great. Other than that, the entitlement is three fifty-seven, six eighty-five that we are currently looking at. In your actual budget, you will see a program income from of thirty thousand. We are expecting that to come from repayments of shop studying loans. So as we get repayments in, we are allowed to then reallocate them back to the final line. We basically we receipt those payments in the system and be able to put those through. So as you see more loans come through, we're able to be able to say, people have given us the money back. We can put that back out for those small business owners as well. And we're hoping to see a lot more payments coming through with a lot more loans coming online here soon too. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a little bit smarter about one of the line items, the Energy Assistance Program. I know we have twenty thousand budgeted this year. I don't think we ended up expending anything from last year's on, am I correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to see, get your thoughts about maybe how we could do a better job of, you know, advertising to see if we could, you know, get, get that on a yearly basis allocated a little bit more efficiently.
So what we're hearing at from this state level is a program called Whole Homes. While Carlisle Borough did not get an allocation out of it, Cumberland County did in the amount of two million dollars. With that, that is more homeowner repair as well as that ener- energization, climatizing, things like that. So that money is going to be online in the next, I'd say, three weeks. So as that comes out, you're going to see a lot more advertisements throughout the state on rehabbing, energization, all of that. So that is going to be able to be the precedent in that conversation to do those things for everyone. So within what's already allocated, if for some reason the Whole Homes money goes very quickly, which we already have a thirty-some waitlist on it. But two million dollars, it's going to take a little bit to use all of that, and there's a cap on it. But we have then the momentum to be able to do more with it. So it is just those conversations, and you're going to see it a lot in the press. Lancaster just did a huge press release for their Whole Homes program on Monday, so you're going to see it.
That's, that's great. I'm glad to hear we're, we're getting a much more substantial set aside for that. Can you answer whether any of that is eligible for multifamily housing? We will have the ability to work with landlords of low and medium income residents to do some of, okay, great. I, I would love to work and, and maybe get a point of contact with you all, just so I personally can have a little bit more insight of what you're thinking in terms of kind of your criteria of, of who you will end up working with and, and, and not. This is one of our goals, right? Is to reduce electricity, energy consumption, and I look forward to, yeah, working with you all and trying to make some improvements on, on our housing stock. So this is great. Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other quick, go ahead.
Just to add to that, so that two million for Whole Homes was from June of twenty twenty-two. So there is an opportunity in June of twenty twenty-three, that pot could grow. Is that, is that correct? More money could be added in this day. I mean, we're not banking on that, but that's.
It can. So I was just at a D C E D conference on Monday and Tuesday in State College. Whole Homes was a definitely a point conversation through it, and that was definitely a need that a lot of people are seeing. Specifically that, the energization and the fixing and the cove repairs. While we have been on the forefront of doing the owner occupied rehab, and a lot of people weren't doing that. The Whole Homes aspect got a lot of momentum and a lot of press. So people are seeing that these programs exist. It is on the docket to be presented again for budget for continuization of funds. And then there's also always the reallocation. If they put a certain deadline on the Whole Homes funds, that it has to be expended by a certain timeframe. If we have come to completion of expenditures, we could absorb money that other people don't use. So there's always, there's always more money.
Great, thank you.
For, for those of you who just joined us, this is, we're in the midst of the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three budget year for the Community Development Block Grants. There any other?
I don't know if this is a you question or a you question. But for the, for the tree program specifically, it says low and moderate income property owners that, that already have the shade trees. So is this only? I've sat in on the Shade Tree Commission before, and you know, it tends to be a volunteer request. And so I'm always concerned about, you know, areas where there's, there are no trees already. Maybe a block that is majority rentals, meaning a landlord, is not choosing to invest in trees because of roots and sidewalks, and they, you know, see it more as a, something that they have to deal with rather than an enhancement. So although I'm happy to see that it is going to low and moderate income, I want to make sure that we're also, is there a possibility of this increasing the amount of trees that we can put into those areas and strategize?
So what, what? How we have this currently structured is we envision that if there are existing trees, that the Shade Tree Commission deems needs to be removed. We know that that's a barrier to, for low and moderate income families to be able to absorb the costs for removal of a tree and tree stump. And, you know, I, I don't know the data on it, but as we've seen, there are a number of empty tree wells around that when, when our property owners do have to incur costs such as that, they're very hesitant to replant, even though we have our Shade Tree program in place that provides a free replacement tree. So the, the thought is that if we come to the table, we have the monies there for those trees that need, that are deemed, that they need to be removed. We're able to provide assistance to that property owner to help with the removal of that decayed tree or, and the Shade Tree Commission and the free trees would be available as well as if there was problems with the sidewalk damaged by trees. We have our Sidewalk Assistance Grant Program. So you marry that all together, and we hope that we have a, a solution to the problem that currently exists. We'll see how it goes. But that, that's the thought is to marry those three kind of where, you know, it's a one-stop shop for a property owner. I hope that answered your question.
Sort of, it's more of just like maybe something more that we would look at structuring, planning. So I also, the first one was about the owner occupied housing. And rent, they can be rental upgrades. So I mean, I think that can go along with our rental ordinance as we're doing inspections and finding code violations. But also maybe using that time to engage with our landlords about the, the need for street trees in these highly like focused areas that, you know, the north is obviously is, is, there's a lot of areas that are completely without trees. So I think, I think we're on the same page, but I'm just thinking like as much outreach, talking to as many folks as possible so that it's great that we put the funds in here, but I always want to make sure that, anything that we can do to.
And, and the one thing that I will say, I know I, I look down at Jared, who is our Director of Sustainable Community and Economic Development. His team has been very proactive that way. Once we council approves the budget, we, we do try to put together a flyer that provides information on the programs. So that again, as they're engaging with the community, they're able to provide the flyer. Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, you even had a packet of information, I believe, at one time, prepared that you could give the entire packet, right? They had an application and everything in it. So absolutely, these are programs, the Sidewalk Assistance, the Tree Beautification, all that, we can package very nicely and have our staff as around engaging with the community promoted proactively.
Exactly. And then as we, as we go through, once this stuff comes online, which a majority of you have been here for a while, it would be a September, October timeframe. So when HUD actually will go through the approval of the budget and the notification of everybody that everything's copacetic, you have your funds, go ahead, start obligating your programs. So as we get into that fall timeframe, we're able to really establish those outreaches, communications, things like that to continue going forward with it. The wonderful thing about having programs from multiple years and activities is that when we have issues of timeliness and things like that, we have multiple things going off that we're not waiting for the right season, we're not waiting for paving season for all of our funds to be expended. So we're able to keep the wheel going and being able to do outreach at all times of the year, depending on if that program really fits and can be done in that timeframe. And then if we go back to Susan and I, when we sit down and we look at these programs, we can go, okay, this is working, this is not working, we need to change the verbiage, we need to do this, we need to do that. And then it just goes for thirty-day comment, and we're able to keep moving forward.
Any other questions from council? Any questions or comments from the public on the twenty twenty-three C D B G budget? Sure, you'll have to come up to the podium, we'll need your, your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Jeff Adams, one thirty-seven F Street in Carlisle. My question is, this sounds like it's allocating funds for trees and for sidewalk renovations, but is it also putting towards requirements and funding towards the proper installation of trees? Because not only do trees need to be the right type of trees, but they also need to be installed correctly and for the future, so that when, you know, roots eventually grow out, are they going to grow into a building's foundation? Are they going to mess up the sidewalk again? Are they going to hit pipes?
That, that's a very good question. I'm glad that you posed it. If our Parks and Recreation Director was here, she would assure you that the Shade Tree Program falls under her purview. But our Shade Tree Commission, they review periodically the appropriate trees that they will approve for planting. I do believe that there is some oversight to the planting as well, but I, I, I would need to double check with her on that to ensure that we, we try to set the tree up for as much success as possible. You'll see with newly planted trees too, that we put the, the water bags around them. Again, as a way to try to assist the homeowner with making sure that the tree gets, you know, established from day one, from the time it's put in the ground. So if you'd like, I can, if you give me your contact information after the meeting, I can circle back to you and you can take a look at, at all the standards that they have. You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, do we have anybody by Zoom, Joyce? Okay, thank you, Heather. The hearing is journey will roll right into our workshop meeting at six oh seven P M. And we'll begin with the call to order and pledge allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is citizens to be heard. So if you did not schedule one of the presentations beforehand and would like to, to make any, any comment on borough government or anything that's affecting borough government, now's your opportunity to do so. Is there anybody who would like to do so? It's, we have a bicycle gang here tonight, I know. And Mr. Stewie has joined us. Joyce, do we, do we have no one by Zoom whatsoever? Okay, and no hand is being raised. Okay. Okay. Next, I'll entertain a motion on the meeting minutes to review and approve the April fifth, two thousand twenty-three workshop meeting minutes. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Zer Second. Second by Councilor Hicks, I heard his voice first. Although, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next, citizens to be heard, Mr. Shane, you're on the, you're on the agenda tonight. Come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Joe Shane, fifty-one West I Street in the Borough. Is there any information you need before the statement?
That's all we need.
I'm also here with a former student, friend, colleague, Tina Ziegler from the Y W C A, who's also on the Committee for Carlisle Pride. So just to let the borough know that we are scheduling some events in the month of June as part of Carlisle Pride, specifically on, from June ninth through eleventh. And our one ask of the borough is if the mayor is available to give a proclamation on Saturday, June tenth. Is that correct? And to give a little bit of more of an overview of the events that we've planned, we've had a really great committee that's come together to form some great events for, for Tina to give an overview there.
Thank you. So like Joe said, I'm Tina Ziegler. I live at one twenty East Lother Street in the Borough. Carlisle Pride has been organized by a group of individuals and organizations who are dedicated to making Carlisle an affirming, accepting and safe place for all. We have held committee meetings by weekly on Tuesdays at the Y W C A. And the next meeting is May ninth at five thirty, if anybody would like to join us. It's an open planning committee. So we have scheduled events for three days, Friday, June ninth. We're going to have a kickoff event at the Y W C A, a Bonfire Beyond the Binary. It was a super big success last year, folks really loved it, so we're bringing it back. That's going to be at the Y W C A, six to eight P M. Saturday, that is going to be the big day. We're hoping to start off with a proclamation here at Borough Hall at ten A M. And then we would like to take a pride walk from here westward over to College Street and then up north to the Y W C A. That will happen at eleven A M. And then the pride picnic is the big shebang. Community picnic, fun games, folks of all ages. It's going to happen on the lawn of the Y W C A, which will also allow it to be inside should there be rain. And that's going to happen from twelve to four P M. And then Sunday, June eleventh, it's going to be our closing event. It's going to be actually the opening of the Prisms in Pride Juried Exhibit at the Penny Gallery. And so that's going to just be an opening reception at the Penny Gallery from one to three P M. And that is all we have. Any questions?
Thank you. Anything? Yeah. Thank, thank you for coming out today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentations, we have a presentation on Vision Zero. Mitch, if you'd like to take the podium. You didn't, you didn't even say anything.
Oh, awesome. And I do, I do want to mention, I did make some corrections to the pie chart. I showed the Climate Action Steering Committee, so apologize for any misinterpretation that I gave. All the stats and code is up online, so anybody can look at it and scrutinize it. It's there for you to look at and, you know, you can always email me if you find something like, what is this? So Vision Zero is a, it's sort of a, a network of cities that are really working to try to, try to end traffic violence and try to reduce traffic fatalities and also really try to reduce severe injuries down to zero. There's actually four cities that I know of in Pennsylvania, there may be more joining. Bethlehem, Harrisburg, Philadelphia and Lancaster are all Vision Zero cities. They have Vision Zero plans. And they sort of, they're sort of a, a unique approach to implementing Vision Zero. So it really involves, the goal of Vision Zero is really to set a date to end severe injuries and deaths from traffic and then working to meet that goal. And it really involves thinking about traffic injuries and deaths in a different way rather than thinking of them as inevitable, thinking of them as preventable, integrating human failure into their approach. So, you know, we all need to understand that driving, cycling and walking is not a perfectible art, that we're all humans and we make mistakes. And really sort of thinking about, you know, that as, as humans, we make mistakes and that those mistakes have different consequences for different types of road users and different outcomes as well. And then also just sort of thinking about how saving lives, it doesn't have to be expensive. It can be, you know, you know, as cheap as paint or pylons. And ideally, you know, eventually move towards some more hardened infrastructure. This is a chart from the, the New York Times, looking at crashes and particularly the fatalities, road deaths in the United States per million people. The United States is one of the few developed countries where traffic fatalities went up during the pandemic, whereas most countries, it went down. And this is sort of, a lot of, a lot of these gains were in vulnerable road users, so cyclists, pedestrians, people who, you know, are, don't have the protection of airbags and crumple zones and seatbelts. We specifically looked at serious injuries because they are the most likely to be reported and have the most consequential effect on their victims. So there's a little bit of analysis that goes with this. And minor crashes are between pedestrians, cyclists and cars or motor vehicles tend to go unreported because it's, you know, there's often very little evidence except for maybe a welt on the side of your body or, you know, and it's sort of not, you know, not, not much you can really go off of unless you have it on camera or something like that. So these are some data sets we use for analysis. The American Community Survey, particularly the five-year estimates as well as population estimates. The PennDOT Crash Map is a really excellent and incredibly detailed data set. It's really kind of, I feel like it's still, you know, you could explore, you could spend your whole life exploring it probably. And then this is sort of some economic data that didn't really make its way into this presentation, but it's included in, in some of the data sets online. These are the libraries that were used. Everything is written in Python and pandas, matplotlib. Pandas was used for organizing the data, matplotlib was used for plotting, and cartopy was used for, for mapping. This is just the image of some of the, the code. It's all up on this GitHub link here if you want to go explore it yourself. So what, what is a suspected serious injury? So suspected serious injuries are any injury other than fatal which result in more than one, one or more of the following. So severe lacerations resulting in exposure of underlying tissues, muscle organs, resulting in significant loss of blood, broken and distorted extremities, crushing injuries, suspected skull, chest and abdominal injuries other, other than bruises and minor lacerations and significant burns are also included in suspected serious injuries. This is the death definition according to the PennDOT dictionary on the data set. So what we did was, I, I took all of, organized the crashes by municipality. And we looked at, so, so on this chart here, we have the sum of crashes on the Y axis and for each municipality, and on the X axis, we have population by log scale. So if those of you aren't familiar with the log scale, it goes sort of like one, ten, one hundred, one thousand, ten thousand, one hundred thousand. So Carlisle is a municipality of twenty thousand people. And we're sort of really kind of punching way, way, way above our weight in terms of cycling injuries. They're typically very rare and we see them, you know, they happen very infrequently in, in particularly in small towns like our own. And so this is a, this is comparing the five-year estimates with the five-year census estimate from the American Community Survey. So, so it's five years of crashes and then the five-year census estimate. So you can see, can people read that? Is the text too small? Okay, so you can see, we're on the same line as Wilkesboro, Will Creek Township, Lancaster City. Pittsburgh City is one, 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 one rank above us. And then Erie City, we have there. Philadelphia is excluded because it's a massive city, it's its own county. It's the largest city in Pennsylvania, but it would be sort of way off up in the corner. I'm sure if we broke it down into its individual districts, it would probably disperse amongst these. And then if you look at it over a ten-year period, this, it looks particularly bad. We haven't had any cycling deaths in this town, which is a really great thing. That's mostly attributable to the low speed limits that we have in the town, the twenty-five miles per hour. So, you know, you can see here, there's, we're kind of, depending on how you hash it, I included deaths in this because if I didn't include deaths in it, we would be number two, like by. We'd, we'd be essentially up there with, with, with Erie, Pennsylvania, tied, tied with Erie. So, and this shifts, there's a lot of variance in crashes from year to year. So this is a particularly bad year. Twenty thirteen was a particularly bad year for, for cycling crashes. And this, this isn't all bad news. So also, the American Community Survey has a bike to work estimate. So it estimates how many people bike to work on the American Community Survey. So what you can see here is this little yellow dot up in the, kind of like. So uh, what you can see here is this little yellow dot up in the uh, kind of like, right? That's Carlisle up there. Um, so you know, you can see that we're, we're really quite high. We're right next to Ferguson Township in terms of so on the Y axis, I should explain this, that's the ACS bike to work estimates. And on the X axis is population um, in a log scale, they're both on log scales. Um, so we actually have a really large cycling population comparatively to other municipalities in Pennsylvania. Where, where, we have more people, uh, accord- according to the estimate, we have more people that bike to work than, you know, Lancaster, Harrisburg. Um, and you know, I think when you think about it, it's not really a surprise because we don't have a transit system here. It's a small town. It's relatively easy to bike across. Um, so when you sort of look at the, the traffic severe injuries, they make a little bit more sense, but they're still quite high here. Um, and so you know, one of the thing, one of the approaches that uh a lot of Vision Zero cities use is they use maps to sort of identify regions of the town that have a high frequency of crashes. And try to work to address those the quickest. Uh, so uh here, this is a all-reported cycling crashes from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one. In Carlisle Borough. And so you can see, um, you know, Palmford, the corner of Palmford Street is quite problematic also coming around the turn north Hanover. Um, where it kind of veers uh north, northeast. And then this is pedestrians. For the, for the same period, all, all reported crashes. So, um, this is a breakdown of the severe injuries. This is the pie chart that changed quite a bit. I, there's some crashes that were not coming through in the data when I, when I looked at it originally. Um, but you can see, so the dark blue here, those are, that's uh cyclists in an accident with an automobile. The dark green is pedestrians in a severely injured in an accident with an automobile. The dark purple is motorcyclists severely injured in an accident with an automobile. The dark orange is automobiles in accidents with trucks. Um, so people severely injured from those. And then the, the sort of in-between orange is a car-on-car accidents. Uh, the dark charcoal is, are, are the um three fatalities. Um, the light, lighter colors are solo crashes, so those are crashes where somebody, you know, their vehicle, they lost control of it and just crashed into a pole or something like that. So you can see they're quite low for cyclists, quite low for pedestrians. Relatively high for motorcyclists and um automobiles. And the ju- the charcoal wedge is also a solo crash. Those are solo crash fatalities. Um, so when you just look at the sort of vehicle-on-vehicle accidents, um, this is sort of what we see. Um, so this is, uh, we have got cyclists making, you know, around twenty, a little over twenty-five percent of the accidents. Thirty-six percent uh, or thirty-six. So, and the numbers are, are on here as well. So they're not a, a extreme, extremely large number of, of uh people, but um, you can see vulnerable road users are really kind of often um endangered by, by moving vehicles. Um, this is the uh breakdown of sort of uh commuter share for the borough, for, for Carlisle Borough. Based off the American Community Survey's estimates. The dark red section or the, the red section are people who just drive solo to work uh within our borough. Uh, and then the green is carpool, the orange is walking, the blue is cycling. The magenta is people who work from home and then there's the other is sort of catch-all for motorcyclables, et cetera. Uh, and then the thin purple wedge is public transit. This um chart on the, on the side over here is sort of, um, it needs to be taken with a little bit of a grain of salt. It's sort of a, uh, a kind of conceptualized way to kind of measure progress on reducing uh traffic injuries. So um, the, these down here, that this is this sort of share of, of road users in the um, X axis here. So the green rectangle, that's drivers. The yellow rectangle are pedestrians and the red rectangle is cyclists. Um, in the Y axis, so going up, that's sort of the proportion of people injured from that population. Um, so you can see it's very high for cyclists. It's still quite high for um, uh pedestrians. And it's, it's um pretty, pretty close to the, the bottom of it for drivers. So this is using ACS data. It's not actually reflective of, you know, everything going on in our borough. It's really hard to kind of find a way to kind of cut, cut, you know, uh determine this because you can do it by vehicle miles traveled, by met, like person miles traveled, um, and those numbers are, are a little difficult to obtain. So this is just sort of like a ideally, what we'd like to do is squash both of those really tall rectangles down to the same level as drivers. Um, and that can be done by either expanding the number of cyclists and pedestrians or also just by reducing accidents in, in total. Um, this is just sort of going over a little bit why, you know, I think like cycling is uh and, and walking are really important um modes of transit. Carlisle's really small. It's five miles in its really longest dimension. I think most people don't travel that whole dimension, um, unless they, you know, live on the far east side and are commuting to the warehouses or another job out, out west. Um, so you can get across the whole town in almost fifteen minutes and on a bike. And you know, so it's not, it's very comparable to driving by car in the town. Um, this chart here is a uh basically everything under here are, so this is a distribution of people's uh travel times in the borough. Really, everything under here is, you know, fifteen minutes of, of travel. So, you know, a lot of these people on the first sort of bump here live and work in the borough. So according to Kat uh Tetrina of Investopedia, tried to find a better quote than this, but uh, experts recommend spending ten to fifteen percent of your income on transportation. Um, I think that works really well for, you know, people making over, you know, sixty thousand. But once you get below that, um, so in this chart, the blue bars are peoples, uh, there are income brackets. The red line or the orange line is the p- the percentage of their income going to transportation costs. So um, you know, and basically you, down here, um, you have people making below uh twenty thousand and they're spending more than thirty percent of their budget on transportation costs. And really, you only get to, you know, fifteen, ten percent when you're, you know, above eighty, uh eighty thousand here. So, you know, and this is for, you know, broadly for the U S. And I think that's an important thing we need to think about when um, for, for a borough because it's so walkable, because it's such a short, short distance. This is just the distribution of house, household incomes in, in Carlisle. Um, and something I, I, I wanted to bring up that I didn't bring up in the original meeting is that, you know, deaths for, for vulnerable road users are um racialized. This is, they affect people disproportionately based on race. They affect people disproportionately based on income. And I think that's a really important thing that we think about moving forward, um, in terms of who is impacted by um traffic violence in, in our borough. Uh, this is just sort of a, a example from the EU of sort of thinking about, you know, how we wanna think about mobility in our, in our town. Now, this is a example of a raised crosswalk from the PennDOT handbook that sort of um illustrates sort of uh essentially kind of you have a crosswalk that is just a continuation of the sidewalk. It's um, it may be, or costly. You can't always install it on emergency corridors or if you have drainage problems, but it's really great for um people on wheelchairs. You don't have to dip down to the road. You don't have to worry about their ice forming, you know, when you cross the, the area when you cross. Um, and it slows cars down as it approaches the crosswalk. They have to slow down because it's essentially a giant speed bump. Um, and so you don't have to worry about approaching the road and waiting kind of to play this chicken game with drivers as they're, you know, flooding by. You know that they're going to have to slow down because of this structure. There's an example of this over on, I think it's Cedar Street or no Cherry Street. Um, we're going from uh Dickinson over to the, the gym. Uh, yeah. And also thinking about like trying to find ways to reduce speed limits in the borough. You know, thi- this is a, a image from Vision Zero. So uh, thinking about kind of, you know, reducing speed limits down to twenty miles per hour is, and, and really, you know, keeping, keeping that and sort of designing roads around that uh is really critical because really kind of just gets the number of people severely injured or, or killed, um, you know. Brings down quite, quite low. Um, and then I think the other thing that is really important is thinking of an active transportation plan. Um, and sort of just a transportation plan more broadly, in the sense, you know, we need electric charging stations for E Vs, but we also need bike lanes. And so kind of thinking that out beforehand and really, you know, I think the borough is gonna play a really critical role in that. Um, so uh, so that we sort of can have a, a, an integrated network of bike facilities and uh, and yeah, transportation. So, and these are just sort of some uh next step to ordinance ideas. Yeah, that, that's all.
Mitch, thank you, thank you so much for, for putting all that together. Did, before you step away Mitch, do you wanna see if anybody has any, any questions?
Absolutely.
Counsel, counsel, any questions?
Uh, thank you for that. That, that was great. Um, quick question. One of the first charts you showed.
Yes.
Um, I was keen in on Harrisburg and Allentown. It looks like they're, they're doing better safety-wise. Do you know offhand, I mean, are they doing something different that we should be looking at? Or is that something we should look into? How kind of those third-class cities with more people seem to be safer when it comes to, to cyclists and walkers?
Sure. So I, I, I think Harrisburg is doing Vision Zero. Um, if any of you've been down to Second Street, they've really changed it around. It was like a three-lane road in what, like one-way road. And it was kind of, uh, my friend lives right off that, that road. And we would go visit him and it was just crazy crossing that road. I mean, it was really, um, you know, I'm sure it was great as a driver. You know, you'd probably fly down there unobstructed. Um, but you know, just trying to cross that road to go to the bakery on the other, the next block was kind of, it felt daunting at times. Uh, and so, you know, putting in roundabouts, putting in, they have elevated crosswalks there now. Um, they have, um, just sort of slows the progression of vehicles down and makes it a lot more welcoming to um pedestrians and cyclists. And that's really, you know, I think really critical, especially for businesses, cause you know, people aren't gonna wanna get out of their cars. You know, cause it feels intimidating and, and walk around and uh, you know, I think uh, you, you know, the, the having like all the, the parking and, and vehicle infrastructure doesn't really work for the town either. So, um, yeah. Uh, regarding Lancaster, they, they have a whole sort of um Vision Zero um, um, sort of like they, they guess, I guess they, they sort of put out a like booklet every, you know, couple of years, sort of talking about progress and sort of showcasing what they've implemented in the town. Sometimes it's like as simple as just putting, you know, paint on the roads. And um, they even have some interesting like kind of uh blacktop muralists where people are, they have, bring in mural artists and you know, paint uh a sort of buffer zone around uh so that, you know, rather than having the concrete bump out, they're sort of, they did that really quickly. So that it's sort of kind of rises a place where drivers don't really feel comfortable, uh, the space that drivers don't feel really comfortable entering to, so.
Cool, thanks.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
I, I did, just wanna make a comment, put a little bit of what um Mitch uh is bringing up in context. Cause um, there are so many important goals that we have, uh, safe, n- n- none being higher than safety. And Mitch, you did a great job of, of highlighting. If that was the only reason to improve our pedestrian and cycling, it would be worth it. But it has so many other benefits, um, yeah, including some of the goals that are sustained. The big sustainable community and a kind of development lead is doing, um, to make it to look at zoning and look at making it easier, maybe to have to cross less hazardous areas um to get to buy milk or whatever you, it is you're doing. But um, it all is part of, a, a lot of these things are intertwined. And I personally wanted to thank you for um taking the time and effort, put together a very coherent and um, I think pretty compelling argument that, that really dovetails well into a lot of the other work we're doing. Uh, and will inform us uh moving forward. And I look forward to supporting um any resolution that's, that, that uh would interest into, into something uh more structured like this. So thank you very much.
And I, I, I would say, you know, thanks to, I could say, I think, I feel like the borough is sort of already moving in this direction. And I feel like it just sort of um hopefully gives you a little bit more uh agency and, and warrant to do so.
Mitch, Mitch, typical next step for, for Ms. Pally would be to pass a resolution committed to Division Zero. And then obviously incorporating that into um future, future goals and, and initiatives. Thanks again. Yeah, now Annie, you have to follow all that applause. You're up. You can applaud Annie too. She's great.
Well, okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, as I have mentioned in previous Borough Council meetings, this academic year marks the twentieth anniversary of the Carlisle Borough Student Ambassador position. Um, as the student ambassador, this position has enabled me to learn more about local government while also strengthening the relationship between Dickinson and the Carlisle community. And it has been such a wonderful opportunity to be a part of the council for the past academic year. The purpose of my presentation tonight is to walk you through some of the key moments in the history of the student ambassador position. When I came into this role in the fall, I realized that in order to move forward well, I really needed to take a step back and learn from the former student ambassadors. But I also quickly discovered that in order to understand the work that they did, I also needed to understand the broader context in which they had acted. So it started as a couple of surveys to the former student ambassadors, eventually became a year-long research project into the history of the student ambassador position. The timeline that I am about to show you reflects information that I gathered from those surveys to the former ambassadors as well as surveys to the current Borough Council members and conversations with former Carlisle Mayor Tim Scott. Dickinson's former Executive Vice President for College and Community Development Rusty Shank. Former Executive Director of the Cumberland County Housing and Redevelopment Authorities Chris Galata. And Dickinson's current Chief of Staff Karen Farleyak. Not to mention many, many resources from Dickinson's archives and special collections. Uh, many of you may remember or have been part of the events contained in this timeline. Um, but I think that it's especially valuable to be able to frame these community-based initiatives through the lens of the student ambassadors. So, we'll start in nineteen ninety-nine when Dr. William Durdin became president of Dickinson. He enacted three task forces at that time, one of those being college community connections. That same year, Brian McLaughlin, class of two thousand two, founded a Student Senate Town Relations Committee. The initiative of these two committees formed the foundation on campus for much of the community-based work that took place over the next decade. Now we're gonna take a look beyond the limestone. In two thousand one, future Carlisle Mayor, Mr. Tim Scott, was elected to Borough Council. In the spirit of volunteerism that emerged in the aftermath of nine eleven, Mr. Scott proposed the concept for the student ambassador position as it now stands. The proposal was approved unanimously by Dickinson Student Senate and then enacted by the Carlisle Borough for the next academic year. And in two thousand two, Michael Grant, class of two thousand four, became the first Carlisle Borough Student Ambassador. At the time of Grant's term, Dickinson became a Keystone Innovation Zone under Pennsylvania Governor Rendell. This propelled the development of the High Eye Partnership in two thousand six, an intensive community and economic development plan that continued for the better part of the decade and included involvement from several student ambassadors. This also coincided with the movement of Dickinson's Office of College and Community Development into a location on West High Street in downtown Carlisle. Between two thousand eight and two thousand nine, the community saw investments in the form of businesses and nonprofits such as Mystery on High, the Cumberland Valley Visitors Bureau Visitors Center, and the Cumberland Valley Trails Partnership. In two thousand sixteen, the Carlisle Borough adopted a human relations ordinance and students from Dickinson, including student ambassador Jackie Joyce, class of two thousand nineteen, joined community members in Borough Hall for the contested vote, filling it from wall to wall. The following year, former Dickinson president Mark Ensign founded the Carlisle Community Action Network to facilitate cross-sector community collaboration and student ambassadors Espoir Delmain, class of twenty twenty-one, and Jesse Hayes, class of twenty twenty-two, participated in these discussions. The moments that I have mentioned here are just a handful of those that have characterized the relationship between Dickinson and the broader Carlisle community. However, they come together to create a narrative of continual learning, innovation, and shared vision. The spirit of volunteerism that motivated Mr. Scott to create the student ambassador position is grounded in the firm belief that our campus and our community have a commitment to join in conversation and learn from one another. My main takeaway from this project is that our community has been created with intention and that it is intentional partnerships that will continue to move it forward. It is incredible to see how far we have come in the past twenty years and to me, the student ambassador position is itself evidence of that progress. This timeline will be available through the CCL, CCLA website in the coming months. Um, and I encourage you to browse through it and follow the links to all of the archival material that's nested in there. I welcome any questions you may have, but I'd also just like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve as the Borough Ambassador this past year. I've really enjoyed learning from you.
We've, we've been happy to have you, Annie, and, and thank you very much for, for the presentation. Annie, if you want to, before, I'll go around if you want to hang out at the podium for a moment. You're not off the hook yet, Hank. I just want to make sure there aren't any questions or comments. Any comments, questions from, from council?
I just want to say it's, it's been a delight having you here this year. So thank you so much for your service and thank you for this wonderful presentation. I sort of have a unique, um, uh, sort of place in this. I, I'm been, I've born and raised in Carlisle, now in Borough Council, but also a Dickinson graduate in the years prior to President Durden's, um, real focus on community, um, and college relations. And so it's, it's really neat for me to see how that has grown in the years since I left Dickinson and you, you're a wonderful example of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there, was there another comment?
Uh, yes, I just want to say I saw the presentation last, uh, last week at the CCLA ceremony. And, um, it was, I learned a lot because I did not know that, you know, this, that had been happening this long. And I didn't know the connection, so with, with Chris Galata and Rusty, Rusty Shank and, and Tim Scott, I mean, that's the way that Hope Station was formed also from the same group of people. So it was amazing to see that. You did an awesome job putting this together and, um, I agree with everybody else. I mean, we started around the same time, I feel, sort of. And I think you, you have been great and it's been, um, wonderful to see you and have you be a part of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Mention of Hope Station actually just made me think, um, I am hoping that this becomes a repository of information that future Borough ambassadors can add to. So if you look through it and see information that's missing or something that you'd like to add, or if something comes up, send it over to CCLA. We're going to keep building it out so that it becomes more of a repository for the community.
And before you step away, I know, I was chatting with Professor Hafler earlier this week about the current state of, of the student ambassador program, so, so to speak. And, and I know if you want to hang out there for a moment, he's going to come up and have some comments.
Jim Heffler, two twenty-seven, Moreland. But, uh, I'm, I'm here, uh, as you said, as a, a professor at Dickinson College in the Political Science Department. And as why am I here? I'm here because the Political Science Department, uh, is having its end of year dinner, uh, right now. It's a nice event and, uh, we make presentations of awards to selected outstanding students. Someone named Annie was slated to get an award this year. I tried to encourage her, uh, to come to the dinner, but she said she had Borough Council business to attend to. So I decided to ask Deputy Mayor, uh, Brenda Landis, who asked, uh, Mayor Sean Schultz, uh, if I could conduct some, uh, Dickinson College business here tonight. Mayor Schultz said, whereas, sure. So, uh, it is my honor tonight, uh, to present the Mullen Prize in Political Science. The Mullen Prize is awarded each spring of the academic year to a member of the junior class majoring in political science who combines demonstrated academic achievement with strong interest in the American political process. The award comes with a citation, a two hundred dollar gift, a book I handpicked for the recipient, and a shiny Dickinson lapel pin. When I started asking around about this student, you won't be surprised to find out the superlatives cascaded into my inbox like Corvettes pouring into town in the last week of August. Here's just a sampling, "A person who can engage others in a very productive fashion, exceptionally driven and self-motivated, determined and strong-minded, while also being considerate and polite, able to quickly learn and synthesize complex information, gifted as a critical thinker and a person of unlimited potential, committed to making the world a better place." Sounds like a mayor material to me. I'm a quarter Irish and I know the Irish have a saying for gifted people like this. They say, "Ay, she's a shiny button, isn't she?" Annie, in my thirty-three years of teaching, I can list just a handful of students who I put in your category. If you do the math, and I did, that puts you in the top one half of one percent. And I think we all know what that means. That means that going forward, whenever I hear your name mentioned, I will forever think, Annie Fisher Hansen, ah, she's a shiny button, isn't she? Congratulations to you, Annie, on this so very well-deserved award. And a book, Test on Friday. And, uh, and your shiny button? Congratulations. And thank you for letting me do this tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. Congratulations, Annie. We'll give Annie a chance to catch her breath. Okay. Next up is the Public Safety Committee. There's a, a motion, uh, under the, under the Public Safety Committee, um, that we will need, we will need to, to amend, uh, because we're not going to need the, the street closure. And this is going to be a borough-sponsored, um, event as sadly, former, uh, ser, this former chief, uh, David, David Boils had, has, had passed away. And there'll be a, a service for him, uh, former fire chief. So I'm going to move to amend, uh, and, and approve as, as follows. The council authorized reserved parking on the two hundred block of West Lowther Street between the hours of ten AM and one PM on Saturday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-three, for a borough-sponsored event honoring former fire chief David Boils at Saint Paul Evangelical Church. There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counsel Hicks. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Thank you all for, uh, for considering that amendment. Next, Public Works Committee.
Um, so actually, there is a staff update, um, on the Noble Boulevard potential safety enhancements.
Good evening. So at the February workshop meeting, staff made a presentation to council regarding, uh, some suggested safety improvements along the Noble Boulevard corridor. That's from Ridge Street to South Hanover Street. And it was intended that, um, these improvements would be part of a, of a road repaving project, uh, that would, uh, provide some low-cost, um, quick, um, upgrades that allow for stormwater management, some traffic calming, and also some dedicated bicycle lanes. There was a lot of discussion at the February meeting and then we made a presentation at last, uh, month's workshop meeting. And it was apparent, uh, from, uh, the discussions and the questions raised by council that staff's original concepts of a, of a low-cost, quick, uh, improvement, um, w- was not quite fitting with, uh, the more robust suggestions, uh, made by council. So as a result of that, rather than, um, pushing this forward for calendar of two thousand twenty-three, uh, we're proposing to, um, postpone the, uh, repaving project for Noble Boulevard, uh, till next year and allow for staff additional time to evaluate, um, other improvements and also more importantly, uh, look for some, uh, potential grant funds to support, uh, this project and perhaps, uh, a similar project that we had, uh, previously discussed with the Carlisle area school district regarding, uh, dedicated bike lanes along Wagram's Gap Road, uh, at the, uh, at that school complex. But nevertheless, um, there were a lot of questions and discussions at, uh, at last month's workshop meeting. So, uh, we asked, uh, the manager if we could just provide perhaps a very brief, uh, update on, on what our current thoughts are about, uh, potential improvements there. And what I'd like to do is introduce, uh, those who don't, do not know Jeff Burkston. Jeff is the, uh, is the new assistant engineer for the borough. He's, his first day was the beginning of April, uh, so he's been here a month, although he is a, a, a borough resident. So, uh, Jeff, if you would like to go up and talk to council.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for this opportunity to give you all an update. I think that what is readily apparent is that we kind of have the same set of goals, right? While we had some discussion and thoughts about, you know, how do we best solve this problem, we all have the same set of goals. And that is, how do we make this connection? Because this is kind of a unique opportunity with this little roadway segment. We're connecting the Westwood Ridge neighborhood to Lamberton Middle School. We're connecting the Latour Trail to Thornwell Park. And Thornwell Park then has bicycle connections out to the Cumberland Valley Rail Trail. So it is, it is a really important piece of this puzzle. And we sat down and said, all right, if we're going to rethink this, where, where should we start? Let's start with the traffic volumes. The traffic volumes, this segment of roadway here is essentially the highest borough-owned roadway segment in terms of volume that we have. And it's about eleven thousand vehicles per day. All the way on this side towards Ridge Street, it's about seventeen hundred vehicles per day. Six, you know, one-sixth of the volume. So do we really need, like, it's clear we need four lanes over there. But do we need four lanes over here? So I started thinking, all right, well, and then how do we get, well, how many lanes do we need? Well, we'd have to do a study to figure that out. But if, if we start with this concept of, all right, we're going to have, maintain the four lanes where we truly need them by the Chick-fil-A, that driveway is, is incredibly busy. There's a lot of vehicles headed to and from the Walmart complex. So, you know, we may be able to neck down a little bit there, but certainly once we get to Ridge Street, there's really no need for four lanes. Again, we'd need to do some type of study to actually confirm that, but just thinking at a high level and logically, that's kind of what makes sense. So we already showed, uh, previously that we could steal a, a couple feet from each lane in order to put in a bike lane, but we need that to be safe and protected. So what we'd like to do is this concept of four lanes to three lanes to two lanes. And at a high level, we wanted to just say, all right, what would that look like in terms of lane configuration and driveway access points? And I don't want to go into all the details because as Mark said, it's going to be a brief, uh, presentation. But that is the general concept. So if we can just go to the next slide. Again, not going to run through all the math, but we've got a sixty-foot right-of-way. Could we even introduce some green space? Possibly. The green space would help out with, with stormwater issues down at, uh, College and Walnut Bottom. Not to mention that there's all kinds of other benefits from that. So we, we looked at a high level, will the math work? We think that it could. The next slide, please. As I said, we would need all four lanes in this first segment, uh, but I, I watched the YouTube video and Counsel Hicks, I think you had mentioned that we, we need kind of one receiving lane. So what would that look like? Okay, maybe we could do something there. Let's go to the next slide. Now can we neck this down from, from four lanes to three lanes and introduce some green space in addition to some type of either, uh, shared use path or a bike lane, but, you know, some type of facility that would safely get our bicyclists and pedestrians from east to west along this corridor. And then here again, we still have the three lanes where you have one lane each direction with a, a center-left turn lane. And then the final slide there closer to Ridge Street, you've got the opportunity to put in a lot more green space, uh, by reducing the number of lanes and also the lane widths. So, uh, as, as Mark had said, our, our ask is, or, or I should say, our recommendation is that we put the repaving project on hold. We evaluate this further and we look for additional sources of grant.
Any, any questions, comments?
So, so I forgot to ask this last month, the proposed bike lane, is that two ways? Or would it be a one-way bike lane?
We haven't got, again, we haven't got to the details of what that's going to look like. If it were a, a bike lane, it would, we would want it to be two-way.
Okay.
If we have a shared use path, that's a pretty unique way of dealing with both pedestrians and bicyclists, which minimizes the amount of area you need to accommodate both of those modes. And if that's, if that's what we wind up doing, then we could maybe even introduce more green space. That first segment where we're maintaining all four lanes is going to be the, the pinch point. And so that's where that shared use lane may be a better option because then we could squeeze it in. But yes, it would allow for two-way traffic, both for bicyclists and pedestrians.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just was curious if there's any impact in delaying, um, are there any serious issues that waiting to repave it on the normal schedule would, um, impact anything on the road that of concern?
No. Yeah, I think it was last paved in two thousand eight. It's heavily used, but, uh, as, as Mark said, I, I think that it would be okay to delay that.
Yeah. And in, and another year to try to package it together with some other improvement makes a lot, a lot of sense. Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Is there any questions or comments, uh, from the audience? Go ahead, sir. So you'll, you need to come up to the podium. We'll need, need your name and address.
My name's Brian McDermott. I live at three forty-three EG Street. I love, I, I came here with the bike gang. I, I like, I love what we're talking about here with improving this section. Very necessary. But I, I would like one consideration to be thought about.
Sure. And that's that on Hanover, there's a bike lane, you can imagine, way up here and it ends right about where this picture begins. It would make a lot of sense to me to continue that bike lane so that it would connect into this, uh, so that someone could come from immediately downtown on Hanover and get to this, uh, wonderful, huge bike lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, and we don't have, the, the one little hand on Zoom is enough. Choice? No, no, they're all gone.
I'll, I'll just leave one comment that's more about Jeff and, uh, since all of our bike friends are here, uh, you may not know Jeff, but you should know Jeff. And Jeff has been on the zoning team for the, uh, climate action keys. And Jeff has been on the zoning team for the climate action. He's a Carlyle resident. We're so great grateful that he now is a Borough employee. He's very thoughtful about this type of work. He's done it for many years. So this might be your first introduction to him, but I believe that you'll have some good conversations with Jeff, as will us too. But I'm really grateful that you're here to guide us through some of these because I know that you think very thoughtfully. Mark, you too. Don't worry, I'm giving.
There's no one who's smiling more than Mark.
But uh, but truly, I mean, I've had some wonderful conversations, thinking through all of these types of improvements to the borough. So um. Thank you for taking the job.
Don't let us down, Jeff. All right, thank you. Any anything else? All right, thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I I did didn't want to say, for everyone who came out, even if you didn't speak, I I can probably tell. By the words on your T-shirts, where where you are on some of these issues. It's gonna be a long process and I invite you to remain engaged with this. To keep paying attention to these projects as they're gonna come up more and more. We do our best to try to figure out what is in the best interest of making our streets safer, but. Having you all engaged is indispensable and thank you for coming out tonight and look forward to to you all staying engaged with this issue. Thanks.
Actually, I'm gonna add one more since you, I was really happy to hear that you that the B Street grant funding is also, ah, warms my heart. Because that's another bike, you know, safe safe routes to school that we need to make safer route to school. And and so I think that there's, there are there are conversations that we have that we try to forward some of these really important projects. But it takes time and also that's a PennDOT road. That section that you asked about is a PennDOT road. So like, we are at the mercy of PennDOT. Doesn't mean that we don't beg and advocate and everything, but also your voices are extremely critical. Is the PennDOT survey still open? Great, take the PennDOT survey. I know you don't want to, but you can advocate for all the all the bike infrastructure and you need to tell them all the spots. And take the time to do it because I did. But also, any other way that we can connect on on just advocating for for bike? Not just the infrastructure, but you know, having a bike bus to school and like, I'm happy to ride and. I think that there's some other engagements that we should have with the school district and and showing that there's people that are out here to help move some of these forward. I just actually asked the other day about safe routes to school to the school district and there is nothing on their page. It's only about bus service. And you know, parent drop-off. So I think that there's more voices that that can also help advocate for these very thoughtful and. Small investment of time to just say, how, where are our crossing guards? How can you walk to school? Things like that. So. I'm really happy that you're here. That's why I'm just talking to you for a second, but I'm happy to chat with you, Mark.
And keep coming back with your very kind applause too. I really appreciate it. Okay, there is no new business. Is there any further public comment? Okay, there is done. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks.